Hey, how are you guys doing? This is Shamika with, am I, look, am I muted? Okay, I'm not muted. This is Shamika with Dear Shamika and I have the amazing, the beautiful Brittany Thorn with us. Brittany is running for office, so she just wanted to give us a few details to some of us who may not know how campaigning runs or may not know how this thing works. Brittany just wanted to give us some details about what she's running for and what her plans are with doing what she's, what she plans to do in running for elected official. So Brittany, what are you running for, first of all?
Hi everyone, my name is Brittany Thornton. I'm running for County Commission District 10.
Okay, what is County Commission? What is that?
So here in Memphis and Shelby County, you're represented both by a city council person and a county commissioner. And so, you know, most people know their, their city council representatives and don't necessarily know who their county commissioners are. But there is another layer of representation that you have on the County Commission, which is a very powerful body that has many different functions. When you think about your hospitals, your prisons, school system, County Commission has direct oversight of those bodies. So not to be overlooked and definitely for everyone to know who their county commissioner is. District 10 is from Hamilton High School over to White Haven and out to Cherry Road. So all the neighborhoods that are traditionally black neighborhoods on the south side of town, those are within this district.
Okay, so you briefly talked about what you oversee, but what if you are elected, what does that look like?
Yeah, so it'll look like many different things. So County Commissioners go and there are meetings, lots of meetings. So within committee meetings, you'll be, I'm assuming, assigned or you can self-select into a different committee. So there's like the Budget Committee, there are other committees that you sit on and you have decision-making power over those particular committees. So it's similar, like different forms of government. If anyone is familiar with how government operates, it's just at the county level. And so there is a thirteen-member body and each of the districts has around, I believe, seventy thousand people. There has been redistricting, so I encourage everyone to go to ShelbyVote.com to look to see what district they are actually in, as they may have changed districts and also even to look to see what polling locations they're assigned to, because those have changed as well.
Okay, so as far as laws and things like that and you guys having the power to decide certain things, do you decide as a collective, since you said there are thirteen of you, correct? In totality, do you decide as a collective whole? Or does, does each person just have power over each zip code that they're in charge of?
Yeah, so there's a little bit of both. So definitely, you know, depending on what district you're from, you know, your fellow colleagues will look to see, does the district representative actually support it? And so there could be a lot of like difference. But you know, there are things that impact the whole county. So those would need the majority to be able to prevail. So you need seven votes to be able to pass, you know, any legislation or to get contracts through or to, you know, approve a budget. And so it's important, it's, it's both, you know, independent for the districts and then collective for the county when it comes to the oversight.
Okay, what could you give us an example of what type of budgets you would be able to advocate for?
Yeah, for sure, the biggest one is the school budget. So SCS will bring its budget before the County Commission and, you know, ask for, you know, increases, which is important to know that there's a, there's a phenomenon called the maintenance of effort. So every time the budget increases, it creates a new threshold. And so it's very important for us to know, you know, how things are being allocated and where previous allocations, you know, the impact of it. Because each time there's an increase, then it sets the new threshold for future requests. So that's the, that's really, you know, it's the biggest one when you think about the prisons. There was just an authorization of a thirty million dollar new facility for a juvenile, you know, detention facility. And that came through the County Commission. And so I know there was lots of discussion about, you know, people's support or objections to that. And you think about the budget for the Sheriff's Department. That's another huge oversight for the County Commission. So I've always been told that there is a, here locally, there's a, a strong city mayor and then strong County Commission. So in the two different bodies, like, there's a lot of decision-making power that the actual County Commissioners have in how the county is operating.
Brittany, I'm getting a little, I don't know if it's a Wi-Fi, but are you able to hear me on my end?
Yeah, I hear you.
Or is it kind of muffled because I'm getting a little breaking up on your end?
Uh, you're good. Can you hear me now?
I hear you now, but at times it would, it would go up and down. So I'm thinking, do you have a stable Wi-Fi connection? Just make sure so that everyone's able to hear what you're saying, because I was breaking up. So it may have been on my end, I'm not sure. So as far as we talk about the budget and things like that, is there a place that the citizens can go and look at what, what decisions you're making for them? If you are elected?
Yeah, for sure. So if you just do a Google search for Shelby County Commission, then it'll take you to a website that you can see. The district maps actually haven't been updated since redistricting. So as people, I just caution people to go and click around the different districts and, and see the maps, because they've changed. The best place to go is just to go to ShelbyVote.com if you're interested in getting information for voting reasons. But give it some time for the actual platform for the County Commissioners to update. But you can see the, how to access, you know, meetings and, and get the previous minutes from the meetings and to see, you know, live recordings and things like that.
Okay. What gave you, we talked briefly about it yesterday, but I wanted to kind of reiterate on it. Why, what gave you the desire to run for this position?
Yeah, you know, we're, we're millennials and there're not a lot of us in elected office. And so it's just the time is now for us to step up. We're young adults, we're raising families. We are advancing in our professional careers and we just have more experience, you know. So personally, I just feel like the timing is right for just our age group to just step up and just show, you know, that we have leaders from our generation that are interested in continuing on our legacy and keeping our, you know, our issues at the forefront. So it's just, it's a role that I, I feel equipped to, to perform. And I'm just excited to have the push of moving outside of just looking at one neighborhood being orange mound and looking to surrounding neighborhoods and making some connections and just learning from the neighbors from, you know, beyond orange mound. So that's what the district will do. It'll add, you know, ten-plus neighborhoods to my purview and give me the opportunity to share my learnings and learn from other people and just really just to help organize this district. Particularly, you know, as we've redistrict, there's just so much newness to, you know, our district dynamics. So we need someone to come in and just lay big vision for this new district and how we're gonna achieve together.
Okay. Um, how old are you, Brittany?
Yeah, I'm thirty-two, I'll be thirty-three in June.
Okay, awesome. With you being thirty-two, are there certain pressures that you feel in being so young and running for office? And also, do you feel pressure?
I mean, at this point, I just feel pressure to perform, you know, like you talk big vision and then you're like, oh snap, like I actually have to execute and people are watching. You know, being a young person, you come with so much like gung-ho spirited energy. And so, you know, there's a question of, is it all just smoke? Or is it actually something that, you know, this person will follow through with? So I wouldn't say it's pressure, because I have the intent to execute and I don't, you know, speak lofty goals. Like, these are all things that I think are within reason of like my passion and my skillset. So I'm just excited to give it a go. And yeah, I think that it was interesting when I ran, I actually ran for Memphis City Council in twenty nineteen. I was surprised to hear how many people felt like I was too young. I was thirty at the time and I was like, you know, I never really would have ever thought that thirty would ever be viewed as being too young to run for elected office. And so, yeah, I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of ageism out here. And so it's important for us as young people to take that leap and start to open up this opportunity for young adults to rise in the ranks and pursue these seats.
Yeah, and I, I believe to kind of speak on what you were just saying, people have to realize leaders like Martin Luther King, he was extremely young and he led a whole movement. So we have to be open to seeing what people desire to do and just because they are young doesn't mean that they don't have the capability to be successful. Can you give a little about your background? A little information about your background?
For sure. So I'm a thirty-two-year native Memphian, proud Memphian from Orange Mound. I went to college at Baylor University and graduate school at the University of Pennsylvania. My degrees are in social work and teaching actually brought me back to Memphis. I'm a Teach for America teacher, twenty-fourteen core member that was placed in South Memphis at Core Middle School, which at the time was Kip Memphis Purportory Middle School, which now is Believe Academy. You can see how important it is for us to have educational advocates. Yes, there was three different schools in one location over the course of my career. And so I started the nonprofit in twenty sixteen when I realized that I wanted to be a change maker from outside of the classroom and have really just been like being diligent in this work of nonprofit work since twenty sixteen. So just excited, started this nonprofit called Juice Orange Mound, which is just a neighborhood-based effort in Orange Mound to rally around current residents to ensure that the lived experience in Orange Mound is a high-quality experience. So we just infuse that lived experience, you know, with as much goodness as possible so that people know that there's still, you know, there's still a reason to care about Orange Mound and to fight for it. And so, yeah, I've done a lot of things along the way and have found public service as a passion. I'm just excited to see how everything pans out on May third.
May third, so we are in, is, is getting down to the wire. How long have you been campaigning?
So honestly, I mean, I, I ran in twenty nineteen, so it's, it's not a hard start from one campaign to the next. So I've been campaigning in this political arena for years now. I would say at least three years of me being actually politicized as someone who's interested. And so for this particular campaign, there was a point where I was leading a grassroots homeless shelter in Orange Mound for eleven months and thirteen days. So I honestly, like I, I moved out of my house to start this homeless shelter. And so that was a really deep dive into the homeless community in Orange Mound. So I feel like the shelter was closed on January twenty-eighth. I would say in this cycle, my campaign started on January twenty-eighth, because it was just really hard for me to try and keep, you know, manage both hats. So yeah, we're jumping right in and we're, we're just here in the sprint. Early voting actually starts this week, it starts this Wednesday. So the process of voters coming out to vote will start this Wednesday.
Off head, I'm, uh, off, I'm trying to figure out how I'm gonna ask this question. So off head, do you know the zip codes that are capable of voting for you?
That's a really good question. Not all of them. I know the three-eight-one-one-four and three-eight-one-one-one for sure. I don't know all the other zip codes. I think more in terms of precincts now, as we're looking to lay out poll workers and neighborhoods, but I don't know all the zip codes.
Okay. Also, what upcoming events do you have so that people can speak with you and get to meet you prior to voting?
Yeah, so we just wrapped up a, a house gathering campaign. So the best way to connect, I would say, would go to www.britneythornton.com if we don't know each other and subscribe and just leave me a message on, you know, where your interests are. If you're a district resident, I would love to maybe hop on the phone or if there's something that you want to invite me to, I'll be there. And outside of that, you can come visit me. I'll be a poll worker, you know, while we're in this early voting season. So you can come out and see me and I'll be pretty public-facing. If there's a Brittany Thornton for County Commission Facebook page, you can go there to learn more about where I'll be on any given day and come out and see me and, and meet me and send some more folks to come and vote. And I would love to have any and everyone's support to help win this election.
Okay. So as County Commissioner, what are some things that people have a misconception that you have the power to advocate for that you don't? Your specific position does not have power over?
You know, a lot of people really just don't think about County Commission. Let's see. I'm trying to think about separations between like City Council and County Commission. I mean, people think that, you know, County Commissioners get millions of dollars to be able to support neighborhood-level organizations and it's not true. Last I was told, I think the budget is somewhere between a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand annually to spread across, you know, all neighborhood organizations within your particular district. So it's not a lot of money when you break it down. So, you know, I think a lot of people are probably thinking like, oh, once you become County Commissioner, then you can just like, give me money. And it's like, there's not a whole lot of money just out here to give. So I'm more so excited to see what leveraging the platform will do. I think that, you know, a County Commissioner has power to convene people and, and lean it into the authority of the position can help people be able to connect. So I think that there's a lot of power in unlocking resources and me being a connector. And so I'm just excited to see what that can do to offset the funds that we don't, may or may not have to give.
Okay. If you are to win, would they, would individuals, once they do have their concerns and want to reach you, will they reach you through the Brittany Thorn website or would there be a different way to reach you if winning?
Yeah, these are great questions. These are like real, like honest, like questions that people like really will have. So I appreciate them. So the BrittanyThornton.com website would definitely be up and we're gonna continue to do organizing. So this particular seat is a seat that's won in the primary. So the primary election comes before the general. So you'll see some of the judges that are out at events. They are saying they won't be on the ballot for this primary, but they will be in the general. So for this particular seat, because there's no Republican challenger in the general, once the winner's selected in the primary, then they pretty much won the seat. So the best way to reach me, honestly, I live on social media. So I would say inboxing me personally on my Brittany Thornton page. Excuse me, or going to the Brittany Thornton for County Commission page is a great way to reach me. Outside of that, it's not hard to ask around to get my, my direct number. And then the number that I give out is my Google Voice number. So it's nine oh one, three zero zero, six six two one. So that's another way and you can just Google me and find that number, it's not that hard. And then in the position, upon, you know, actually being placed in the position, we'll get assistance that will man, you know, our offices. We'll have, you can come, schedule a meeting, come down to the office, you can email, you can call in and I'll definitely be responsive to any type of communications that come out. But definitely try to be as direct as possible, you know. I think that, you know, making a phone call is way better on any given day than sending an email.
So Brittany, you wear many hats. How do you plan on balancing Juice Orange Mound as well as this Commissioner role, the County Commissioner role, if you're elected?
Yeah, 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 and we say when I'm elected, we're gonna speak this.
Okay, when?
Yeah, 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 no. I think that's great, you know, to think about. A balance is something that I feel is always important to try to find in life. I definitely think that this role is gonna give me additional supports. And so it'll help me be able to balance more having, you know, an actual like, you know, assistant that can help me be able to like, you know, handle communications and things like that. That'll be a huge help. And then I do plan to continue to operate as the leader of Juice Orange Mound. The great thing is, is my predecessor, you know, Commissioner Milton, he too has been able to do both roles of being a Commissioner and then leading the South Memphis Alliance. And so there's precedence, you know, I don't have to do this without guidance. And, and you know, I'm excited to be able to tap him to say, hey, you know, how do you do this? You know, there'll be times where I'll have to refuse myself because of, you know, conflicts of interest. But I'll be first thing, you know, learning with the attorney, like what are the parameters? What are the processes? What is the protocol that's appropriate? So that can be right in my, you know, my handlings.
Brittany, what I've noticed, why I love Brittany, she has so much passion, you guys. And as you guys know, I'm from Memphis, so I love to see people within the community who advocate for change. We talked about the homeless shelter, could you go a little more into detail about that?
Yeah, so this was, this was honestly intended to just be a warming center. It was intended to be a shelter. We purchased, the nonprofit purchased, the Edenskey's Big and Tall Building in around February twenty twenty. And so the inclement weather hit like February twenty twenty-one, so we had this building for a year. And internally, our board was just talking about activating the space, because it was literally just an open space and we weren't really using it for much. Because our plan was to like, you know, put, make it a multimillion-dollar like, you know, remodel to the building for it to become a small business incubator. And so I'm literally at home and I'm complaining, my house is not weatherized. I live in Butler Grove and I'm like at home complaining about how, you know, frigid, it's about to be in the winter, because it's like that every year. And I'm like, oh man, what are people on the streets, like, what are they gonna do? And so, you know, the meteorologist is like, oh, you know, this snowstorm is coming. And I'm like, what are people gonna do? And I see these bodies every day passing by and I know that there's no shelter. I haven't heard anything about warming center and our community center. I don't know what people are gonna do. And so I've made a couple of calls and I just pitched the idea to some of the other leaders and they're like, okay, yeah, let's go for it, we'll support it. And so we literally went to Academy, got some cots and then we just, we're like, okay, we can do this. And we can just put the cots out and we can just, you know, have some like snacks and food for people to eat and we can do this. The issue was, I never planned for the end of this operation. So we are like two weeks into executing this warming center and then that third week was like the water boil advisory. And it was like, well, if they don't have a house, how do they boil water? So we stayed in that space to be able to make sure that people had access to like clean water. And then after that, we had, you know, uniquely, I mean, we peaked at like twenty-six people in the building and it was like, we can't just walk away from this. Like, you know, as a nonprofit, this is what our mission says that we need to like focus on and that's just serving people where their needs are. And so we just stayed in that space and just went through these different phases, you know, and it ended up being eleven months and thirteen days of service to the homeless community of building intense relationships. And it honestly, it's like one of the most beautiful projects and commitments that I've made in my entire life. So it's just really cool to just think that these are the same people that I would drive by. And now, you know, like we have relationships and I know their habits, because I have literally laid next to them in the, in the shelter and it's just been a really, really cool, organic, like, experience.
What sparked, because you have so much, like I said, you have so much passion. What events in your life that made you passionate about uplifting your community?
Yeah. No, you know, that's a really good question and I've been thinking about that, because you, you tell these stories and it's like, oh, this isn't normal, but you feel normal as a person. So you're just like, how did this happen? I graduated from private school and so it's just like the, the eyes of me just like, I don't know, like kicking it with like, people who are like, you know, actively like prostituting or like affiliated gang members and drug users and drug dealers. And just like, I think about the identities that people like have convicted, you know, felons, people whose rap sheets are longer than any roll of toilet paper you could like undo. Like, it's just like, how, how would I fall into such a deep relationship with like these people? And it's really just because honestly, I'm a post like drug era eighties baby. You know, like I grew up in the nineties and so drug culture for me was so normalized and it's just everything that I have continued to experience and the remnants of it here in Orange Mound. So the, the people are just like, you know, these are the people that I was around growing up and it's just, there's, there's not a fear there that maybe there is for other people. And then I think that the spirit of Memphis is very much so upheld in Orange Mound. Like people are just like real and they're just cool. And I just think that people are just like really, really cool. And so, you know, I just think that there's so many misperceptions that we have about people and it's not until you like lean in and you actually get to know someone's name, you get to know their story, you get to know their likes and their dislikes, that people just become just regular and you're just like, you're just like me. You know, like you just have different circumstances. So I really think at the core of it is just my absolute fascination. I'm so fascinated by people and I'm just a curious person. So when I like see you littering, I'm like, why did you do that? Because I would never do that. Or when I see you like, I don't know, like only consuming like canned goods and high-sugary foods, I'm like, does that make you feel good? Like, because I don't think that that's supposed to make you feel good. Or when I see people like, I just, I just always have just been like a questioner. And so I think that that curiosity just builds like connection and it just comes so naturally. Honestly, like when I think about this and throughout, you know, this whole process, I've only asked for people to be obedient, because I have, my faith has been a huge part of this process. And my only ask of people is that if during this time, they feel so led to engage in our work, that they do. Because I really have always felt from the beginning that every need that we had would be met by people who were just being obedient. You know, like I just, in this period of my life where I am, I just like seek for alignment. And I think that that will just always create a path now and forevermore for the rest of my life. It's just trying to be in alignment with what, you know, for me personally, the will of God is for my life. So faith has a huge part to, you know, to be in it. And I, I really thank God for like sheltering us and, and protecting me and others throughout the course of this time of deep learning and it's been good, it's been good.
And I can, you're just so amazing. You're going to, Brittany is going, vote for Brittany Thorn. You are in the ten. Vote for Brittany. Also, I have a couple of more questions. So do you know, like as far as you can, what makes the government decide who goes in what district? What's the deciding factor with it?
Yeah, a lot of it has to do with like balance. So you want to make sure that there's like an equal amount of people. So I think that that seventy thousand threshold is pretty consistent across all districts. And I know that there was like, you know, there was a formation, I think, of a new district. So yeah, it, it all depends on, you know, the census and how people are reporting, like where, you know, they're populating space. And then you think you have like this whole space and you have to like evenly slice it. And so there were multiple like boundary spices that were offered up. And so, you know, there's some politics in this too, because it has to get, go up to the state. And, you know, there was an amendment made to this particular one. So yeah, it's, it's a process, it's both natural and it's both political. So I, I look forward to learning more about, you know, how this, this came to be.
Okay. And how can, are you guys, do you ever stream events or when you are having it, stream them online or is there a place just the Brittany Thorn website where they can catch what you're up to?
Yeah, I, I mean, the website is, the website and the Facebook page are the, the most centralized locations for people to, to follow. A lot of like the things, I mean, it's a bit of a strategy, right? So the things that you have public facing are like, you know, things that your opponents can see. So you gotta like balance it. So there's a lot of things that are happening behind the scenes and then there are like strategic things that are posted. So to be in the know, I would say, you know, subscribe to the website. And definitely, if you have, if you feel compelled to get more involved, then directly reach out and we can assign you to things that are decisions that are being made. So the biggest thing is Wednesday starts early voting. So everything is gonna shift to focus on the polls. Every single voter that will vote is gonna pass by, you know, our poll workers. And so we want to have people in position to be able to say, hey, have you heard of Brittany? Because we know that we haven't reached every voter, you know, that will come out to vote. So there's huge opportunity on the polls to be able to win somebody over. And I saw that in twenty nineteen. I remember I closed out the election at Cherokee and people, it was like, it was like people were just like, what's your name? And then they're like, okay, I'm gonna vote for you. Like people, oh, they hadn't heard of either candidate and they were just like exercised. They're more committed to voting than any person that they were voting for. So it, it really can unfortunately be wide open, you know, at the polls. So poll workers play a huge role. So if someone, if you can give one hour, two hours or four, you know, eight-hour shift, that goes a huge, long way to help us be able to make sure that voters know who they're voting for. That goes a huge, long way to help us be able to um make sure that voters know who they're voting for when they go in to to cast their vote.
Okay, besides, uh, this is, now we're gonna wrap it up, uh, when is the election? Well, I got a couple more questions, when, when is the actual elec- when can they vote, and when is the actual election?
Yeah, so it's important that people know process, so for early voting, which starts on the thirteenth and goes through the twenty-eighth. You can vote at any assigned um voting location, go to Shelbyvote.com and you can see the full list. And you can also see the ballot, so you can already start to do your research, you'll see every candidate that will be on your um your ballot to vote for. And um, Election Day is on May third, and you have to go to your assigned voting location on Election Day. So it's important for you to go to Shelbyvote.com and to see, make sure that your registration is up to date. And then also look to see where your voting location is, and if you somehow, you know, are not registered to vote. Um, then you can just activate a vote, you know, there are forty thousand people in this district who are registered to vote, and we're expecting about twelve people to turn out. So you can help us be able to reach, you know, your neighbor, somebody at the gas station, so you know, you're, even if you can't vote, you can activate so many more people. And so everyone should feel tasked with playing a part in this process, even if you're convicted felon, I I come across people all the time. Don't worry, it's okay, because like I said, you might not be able to vote, but you can activate so many votes with your influence. So um I encourage people to to view it as something that they will actively get involved in.
And last que- last question, look, I keep coming up with stuff, but I promise, the last question, when you. See, I gotta write this. Expect from you?
For sure, when I win, um, we definitely run into win, um, you can expect me to be very excited, I mean, I lost in twenty-nineteen. So this is like, um, it's something that I'm very, very excited. Yeah, yeah, I mean, here back showing determination, because I believe in myself as a candidate. Um, when I win, you can expect me to um thank a lot of people. Um, and to be all to, I mean, in the immediate, it's gonna be a great moment, um, but then after that. Since I, um, since I don't actually have a general election that I have to run for, then I wanna use that period to get ahead. So I want to spend, you know, those next couple of months leading into the general, I think, which is in August, um, to canvass. So there'll be a lot of canvassing that's gonna happen, so that we can start to figure out who are the leaders in the neighborhoods and start to start doing some some mapping. So um, you'll be surprised to hear, you know, how many canvassing opportunities there'll be for volunteers on the other side of May. Because I'll be looking to to really start to reach out to voters and um residents and just get to know people. So it's gonna be a lot of relationship building on the other side of this win, and then um upon being, you know, sworn in, we'll be hitting the ground running. Um, and I'm sure work is gonna slap me in the face, so it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be a lot, but I'm excited.
You got this thing, Brittany, I'm. You guys see she has a heart orange represented, not only does she have on the orange, I don't know if that was purposely, was this purposely done?
No, I was gonna say, I was like, this is like nice, no.
Oh, you didn't do it on.
Everybody can't look jazzy like you, let me tell you, it does not come natural.
Look, I should've worn my black. To represent from the haven, so I should've worn.
Nice, listen.
Okay. Why haven't people, please vote for Brittany Thornton? Vote for Brittany, um, what I've noticed is, before we wrap up, uh oftentimes, we will see names on the ballot. I don't know any of these people, and some people will vote just because they're voting for, you know, the people in our uh district. They're just vote, they're just marking names, remember Brittany Thornton, county commissioner. And you guys have amazing, that, you, did you have anything left to say before we wrap it, say bye, Brittany?
No, 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 I'll just say, this is, this election, believe in Brittany, and I appreciate you so much, Shamika's so cool, I got to eat dinner with her. She's awesome, so thank you for this platform.
Believe in Brittany, hello, believe in Brittany. You got.
All right.
Brittany, I'm about to end, let's stick around.